Mr. Ponk is here.
Oh, yes.
And how are you?
Good. It was so brutal. I was in the water, and he was like, "Bring it wet."
I cut my hair. Still getting wet. He might just...
I'm ready.
Ah.
Is it clear?
It's not. She's afraid. Hey, Chris. How are you? Mara's her birthday. She has a great gift to give. You're an athlete. She's never been good. He's putting me in what? Actually, I think I have a coffee.
Well, the yearly testing is done. We don't have the controls back. The water controls without functioning. We gotta look at that. In that last summer, we were quarantined. Getting wiped out by power service or something. Jake's calling us for more of this thing. It's a black screen. We don't have any control for that. Now it's all... It is working. The transducer in the tower is functioning. Yeah, Jake, that's the second transducer. I'm sure that'll load it twice. It'll go back in. The factory is there. Joel wore a pressure relief valve well along when we were out there looking at that. I know this is going to get you well. The pressure relief wasn't well for the unit. So this winter, if we get it closed along, it must be a lot. But it's on order. And the water line that goes with it, you know, busy, we're gonna do it. We've been done with the downwaters. It's basically why we got the water. We always want... So I noticed that the water level also caused the marriage to come in the marriage. I'm talking about Joel who talked about it so bad. They need to come out. So they're very concerned. We just wanted to concern me that whoever treated that bomb, I noticed that the new stuff had tried to bomb into our wastewater plant. So I'm gonna make sure that the superline gets fixed. Or... We're allowing it to be in there in time. So I know that you said that they got cameras in their home. Those are the busts. Yeah. And it'd be good for them to have a good play file again. That is, I think, just so good. I may do a little bit of that. I've got work in the role over the next week. We're going to have a tax one available for calling down. The second sheet is here. And then Brian Rafter and one of the guys, Joe Schon, told me about a sinkhole over by Mill Street Mill Station. And when I went in and looked at it, I could see that guy and some old wiring. So it was the old mill station. One of the concrete lid that was on it, or the metal lid that was on it, had the wiring that fell in. So it collapsed and it was literally somewhere where somebody had been lost. So I had to fill it in the ground. I have something I don't know where to look here. I was just wondering if this one.
Have you had that opportunity to have that generator looked at over there for the Mill Central Station?
Yeah, he's on the list. He's got... Figuring the two power lines are coming out of it. They're not all together. So it shorted it up. So he's going to have to grow new wire. But the Mill Central Station... Get fire. Yes, it's getting... Tom, I listen to things on the outside. She asked, "Oh, I want to listen to you."
Okay. Have you... Ready? So first off, your plan, your plan to do a... A three for these funds, so we're good to go. As you recall, you can only get two draws. So first one, you're pretty much doing upper running, doing a lot of work. And then the next act, you guys are actually the planner. So I have been contacted by Midwest. I did give them a draft contract to go, not to see if you're responsible on that. And you know, most of the time, with us trying to get to a work session, we respect you. I will never come next week. And so whatever they decide, don't worry about asking me. Just go ahead and just try to find it. Any questions about my area? If you get the... You'll give them a work session. I think that can go down to the New York City. And who knows, you're...
Yes. Have you said that Joe was going to approve that?
Yes, it approved. And then they also received open class, something on this part. For me, now we've got this one, we can have a contract back then.
So how much do I need to do?
I have to pay a war. It wasn't mine.
Just write it in.
Uh, we have some...
The patent seven to the parts. There's a specific percentage of the patent.
Over that, they all of their rights gather. Almost all of them. Okay, this is meant to something about disaster. So I do want to mention there are two different planning agencies that have some major program. So OGR has a disaster category for your program. And then EBA also has a disaster. OGR is the opposite of community of pairs. Those are the ones that are mainly on the planning area. EBA is the economic, that one for... Um, OGR is the one for city fellow. EBA is the one for primary health, any other communities to relax. Theirs has been a lot, been a lot of people since the... City's not really this big. It has worked up to cities. City, um, disaster. So EBA, I think, has asked a lot of our folks within EBA, uh, about the case of the highlights. They have disaster available for specific areas. It's all on community law. So order to be eligible, you can be a government. So they have incorporated, uh, maybe the community department. This is incorporated and have, uh, house members so far. So you think there's like... I'm gonna just go after it. There's two types of categories that we feel would be, um, beneficial to a community in solving a problem. One is called a legal path. Another is called implementation path. So if you look at, you have your planning rep, that's what they consider ready. So if we were wanting to go out and figure out really what we need, get done on something, back on your page in the year, this is done, survey, test key, all that stuff. That, right? You could be able to balance to go through 250 of that. That's the way that happens. Um, the next was called the implementation path. I think this might be a little more of a better fit for some of the children. Um, that is more for the destruction or fixing your future. So you could request up to anywhere between two twenty million. So quite simply, you not wish to keep it. Well, maybe the planning, but it's going to go to twenty million. That's so. But we have thought that should be... And Chris, they have EBA. Do you have a lot of that to do? That you're... You have to brush up some of that part of stuff to begin that. It does not mean you have to do just that.
Can we move on from the house to some task? Can we move on?
What, you want to do this project?
Yes.
So first, let me... You're included. It's not applied for receiving EBA money to less, um, expanding and to pass through the water line particularly to the hospital complex. And the law and the hospital needs to report this to the government. So, very good.
Yeah.
And again, so you have, um, if you like that, moving away and having all your circumstances so try desperately to find ways to make up that difference. EBA is not a good one. So you have to come up with that difference. And there are different journey to go through. And fortunately, you can have, which can handle that without, um, you know...
That's cool. Because we can just go to the contract. And you have the one ability to be an engineer. So what happened to the procedure when we still have the problem? You put it up there. We were that problem. Implementation, like having, we don't do problem.
So we faced with your, um, contractors, Wesner and EBA. We got to two point where we could go out to bid. However, the rest could not, you know, fly out. And you think that they just decided not to go further and incur in money on top?
Wasn't, wasn't because of the budget. It was that the bar twenty percent to engineer. And they were prepared for money. So we did have enough. This is further than the point I'm envisioning. It's still at, you know, making... Yeah. Because that didn't do budget. We didn't budget it. Right. It came straight.
Right. We need to hear.
Point you were saying.
Um, but do you have... We were able to EBA to cover a lot of your expenses at the place. My competition with EBA was pushing these people that don't have money to be in there. And one of them just going to go in and incur in a lot of costs. Because we did have to be in there counting, talking about those. And then Chris says, "I'm not going to incur in a lot of costs." But finally, we just said, "Look, we're getting possible. I'm aware of two people that..." So that's one. I think was pretty much not awesome. And we... So I would say, um, if you want to see this gap, when you look at the what was asked of the community and, you know, um, I... Thought, you know, and that's a start.
So if the council wanted to, you could basically take what... What? To the point of Westwood being a way to force in, and just when I've been procured it began for an engineer to come. And then whoever got it, you take that and run it over. I mean, my type of cost, you know, some of the work they've already got done. If the council wanted to do it right now.
Right. There's a lot of questions to you. So, um... We recently decided that... Or if I had all these to it. Fortunately, you don't have a plan yet. So we have...
Right.
But you have less to do instead. You know, that's not a lot of things you're going on. Um, it's more that the previous part. So... This question, as I did, we kind of have, um, you know, why do I still sit in and have some reception to those two? You're gonna go, you're gonna sit down, you're gonna come in. There is a point to come back. So you will have to make sure you have a set and you're going to...
That's what we're seeing.
Yeah.
I'm just...
I would say that, yes. Yeah, that's usually what... But yeah, I know a lot of these are... He gone. Um, so yeah, so that's... So you have a lot of... But just work this way, you know, smaller amount.
If you're looking at the... You're looking at... Oh, yeah. Seven.
Yeah. Every time I hear, I hear the problems.
You're pointing.
So, yes. The only thing is we have to make sure that we can show this order for resilient purposes and to, you know, disaster. It can be a lot.
I hear you, Tim. It wasn't a place to find in the street. One thing, the number of... And the twelve weeks in a second. However, that time, they're going to run it back to that. And we are on... We're on a long time. We can't immediately man that.
Right.
Pressure down by the jury. Dustin knows this. We don't expect that six inch thing. We don't expect that six inch thing in the next ten, four years. It's just us and senior. If that goes, that's our only thing, and I will. Am I right? If it goes down, what's going to happen?
So those are a lot of... That's a lot of... Justation of the family. Well, so it's not... It's a moment for me to go ahead and add. But we, you know, encourage you to go with us sooner or later. Because our property is international. So you are probably taking your other's recommendations.
It's rare to...
So the other, um, situation though, is we have the advice that... They have to reply, um, not having a long application for our country, for anybody. However, it's something we have a... Have John, who's been posting up for each other to do, that we could combine, you know... Is there anyone that would benefit? My partner, I can't think of...
We're looking up to a little career. But since you own the brothers, you have to be there.
Yeah. Right. So you would be able to... We have this, you know, question of all communities. If they were this community and this community, they could, you know, cast the badge. Well, no. You're around one day, guys. So that's about the... Um, at this moment, you're not going to necessarily talk to a progress. But nobody has to ask that to point them back to the, um, project. You guys have to help me, yes.
No, I'm not expecting you to justify that. I don't know. I just think... You need to address this line to put in that's implicated. So I'm saying it's not like we're trying to even have these lines intact. That'll end up as a step there that completely sets us for our own watch. Whatever you want to do, that's self immune. I just think that's... So the line is like...
What can I do? I'll be worried about what we're doing.
Okay, because that part of two is you can also add a storm line. Because the storm line affects all. So we also potentially addressing the storm line. So it's not only a hill. We're looking at passing down resilience of system. Then it's starting to work. That can eventually basically is one of those.
I'm concerned about the... Is the temporary planning, bring this done, the study is done, which probably is, we're looking at nine months.
Right.
Why insurance is that thing that's been... It's just a little bit of...
I can tell you. Yes, I can tell you about it. Yeah. Since you are the doctor, you really probably would not want to go out by the implementation path. So speaking of ready this down, because, you know, it's typically...
Yeah.
Um, you could do a little bit of planning, more direct planning in construction. But you should have pretty much, um, general line of what you know you're going to do. So, you know...
Yeah.
So... Some communities, okay, so you go construction, or you do the engineer. If they don't have a plan, the community would have to take that engineer to give them that one.
The only thing I'm gonna say more than anything I'd say for this customer is we did a PDR on it. And they had a little bit of engineering on it. So the main community, this camp, is ready for the implementation. We can basically take it from ER. If you love it enough, you can take the PDR. And then you can go up and solicit to do QBS. And run this up to half a ton where you go sixty-nine days. Hasn't posted nine months.
Right. So...
I'm just saying.
What?
Something.
Basically, we're dusting off what we know with previous projects. Um, EBA is going on, you know, obviously updated and updated numbers. And I make sure that, you know, that's changed. You know, there's the road construction, you can't use the same pathway anymore. Those things. So if you are that interested or close to construction, so that's why I was saying you guys are much more, um, artificial construction. You're that much better. If that's what you're interested in doing, we will get into it to begin, make sure we want to really be there. But there, um, in all of our cases, it was almost like this shovel ready. So if you are, as you can be shovel ready, that's great. It doesn't mean that you can't add parts to it. Because your main part is shovel ready. But we're also going to be looking at these other parts that are connected to it. It's going to be us. So we can also add this one. Okay? And that help?
So...
Right.
We need to go and do that. I'm not... We would have, I'm sure, a few...
What's the next step that we decided on? The next step is for you guys to decide what... It's not...
You know that you got a...
Yes, that's the biggest part is, you know, if it's going to be, if it's private, it's going to cost us X. Is that really what I'm going to do? And if so, do we have a match? It's going to be you first. Um, if you really feel that match is going on, that there is no way in heck, um...
Well, we could put it...
Yeah.
Put sixty-seven thousand, maybe eight hundred thousand on that right now.
So, you know, there's... If you guys have a sense, it's not, I don't know, those things. But, you know, we can then sit down and talk and figure out what you do have as the plan to go and go from there.
So if they did ten million dollar project, showing you, too. We could come up with a meeting within the next sixty days. So then we'd be like, "This is happening. We're rolling the bottle, we're rolling the dollars for four years." That's going to come down. So if you want to figure that out, you're right. Or you're willing, raise the price for it. Say a ten million dollar project is going to cost you...
So those are things that you guys...
We got... We got the...
So that was the sketches that I've... You had? So like I said, annoying to come to town. And if you guys get a work session, so it's... You wouldn't necessarily, um, and then you're running a session probably to...
Yeah. Talk about it, sit down, if you've got a plan or if you're... A little bit of gambling, sometimes you have to take chances.
Yeah.
It's all...
It's a lot.
Yeah. So, yeah. Bring something.
Do it again. We have a work session with the... Um, I think you guys have remembered, because that's a lot of things from the past and... Before we got...
It should be in our...
It should be in our... You have to need the oil?
Yeah, it should be in there. My little...
Why would you?
That could be something you guys can look at also.
Well, here's the next... If you wanted to be, uh, since you're pretty much got a contract. I'll let everybody, I have no... Okay? Our charge for Midwest would make first. Even if it was a... So, but if you probably reach out to Midwest, they get a PDR, they just send it to you.
And I will see what I can talk through from the, after I have been, maybe I'll have to be, the mayor's son, and he's got to see that.
Maybe, instead of the one, you know, maybe we, something like this, we do that.
Yeah, yeah, basically, you know, Midwest, this part, this, that, 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 you guys. Sound like you have a shot?
Off the office.
Yeah.
Sound like it, sir?
I think I'm on it.
Get the microphone, see you more. Yeah, see you, Justin.
Chris, see you.
See you, Justin.
You said about, uh, twelve, four, and then it's all down, and, or not down, and, but, now. Yeah, because we can see that, close to one point nine million in that one fund, and that's, that's a lot, and, and, that's what, that's what, this is two, on the way, because we're paying that money. And every year, we don't give it to the place until he does, so that it just, now, but, we, we had, when we, when we, some, some point, we, it was, how's it, it's, it's, but, but, of course, we don't want to, a, 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 eight hundred thousand of that was committed, was currently staying in that original project, original project. So we still had eight hundred thousand to do that. We can come up, we got, we should, we can, we can look at another three thousand, and if we give the great study, uh, sugar, we're going to have to raise the rates, we could generate probably the other one. So we, I, I'm not, we can come up with anything else, not, that's too much, we can actually go even more, more, and use more of that one, I think, it was tapped at eight hundred, but, there's a restriction, if we want to use, uh, eighty, ninety million dollars, we can throw out, it's, it's, it's here for love, it's really powerful, so we can do it and have a match. Now, I'm just saying that that was a ten million dollar project, who knows, but I'm thinking ten million, because we can get a price out of that, all, say it was ten million, twenty percent, so we have to cover forty minutes or two million. We already have the, we can do that. We have a borrower, that's where it comes in, there's a townhouse, we're going to raise rates, all we need is not. To me, it's a little brain, because it's infrastructure. The brain, to, to, to impress a sixteen inch man, for this type of soul, to impress a sixteen inch man, for my fellow, to, to, double the capacity, what we bring in, and, 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 up the regular wells, two hundred fifty gallons, four hundred gallons, and, and solve the generator problem, it's whole, the generator's free, gets item off that, gets item off the battery, always out there under that jig, that is a frigging time, I don't, can't tell you how much that is. Midwest, we're missing here, because of the study, that's the name we're running, man, you need to get, you need to get, there's a man, because it has to be. And one of the reasons we got down there now, because we got, we got a pressure valve system in that thing, that combined that, and Dustin, it's in, um, the water system in the jig, two oil wells, you know, have one of the wells gone, and then it's currently delayed a minute and a half a second. It's two wells together, combine the water, the volume that we need, to be our, to be our, uh, strength of system, same with the compliance, same with the same, uh, we give this, we give the sixteen inch man, and that is all we can, we're, we're, that, that, uh, twelve inch, it's coming right out, almost a nap, let's call it, O'Reilly's, it's on the west side of forty-eight, forty-one, that's the twelve inch, six inch, connects into that, part of the P E R, it's two, we want a sixteen inch man, for the main, you know, to the twelve, all the way, Earl, on the west side of forty-one, all the way down to the north side of, Little Rock Center, we come on the highways, and it could tell, a little, that happened, Park, Park Street's going to be, unless it were, or, or, just to be possessed, to be tore out, like, even close, and then follows, down the west, east side of Park Street, all the way down to the alley, and then goes to the alley, and ends up on the old street, that's a lot more, that is order trouble. So, uh, I wish that's, I'm still here, because I'm, I'm, so, we'll do, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, 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 there was a system in there, and it was for, for, before we never could have came in, so, their, their service is fine, but they wouldn't have to use that thing if we could put the improvements down here. Right now, we even know, we can't, uh, six hundred down, we didn't have the power to put that down, down to the southwest center. And we got, we want, we got two, uh, down around the, uh, fitness center. If we do this project, we go to six hundred seven down, from that, seventeen hundred to fifty, for a four hour continuous flow, there's not a going down, there's going to be a part of the, four hour, but if we get that, then you've got to pass that, all up in that complex, and span anywhere you want to go. And so, right now, it's, uh, service, uh, we can get over, straight on, or, or. No, but really, it's fine, you can put it in there. But it's still put the string on the rest of our system, say, we're hot dating, you know, whether you want, and we're, we, we shouldn't do that, we shouldn't use rest of our system.
Here, here, um, talking from, uh, this building. I know, some invoices, let me do that for a minute, so, what do you want to do first?
I'm at, do I have to abstain?
Uh...
It's my card but I don't know.
Am I reimbursing you or are you... Like, it's up to you whatever.
I'm, I'm sorry.
So it's up to me? And I was gonna ask you in September, uh, if they possibly can move to Tuesday. I, um, softballing to Florida, but it was a lot of stuff happened, so, uh, I hope I do their number sixteen, something seven, is it number nine? Or eight? No, you don't have to. It's still not that long ago. I can remember this in September. Nine sixteen. Nine sixteen.
The devil's fire. Since you guys are there.
I'll circle for the...
I'll have that one, I'll be passing it up for you guys this time.
Okay, bro.
Here are the glasses, so we can see.
Alright. We're knocking them out, huh? There. You don't go? That's another one? Okay, this is last one. Well. Very, very interesting. Yeah. I don't have any more. Yeah, you're right.
Oh. No, I mean not much. The bus being so overdone, uh, we'll be flushing it after a while, so that I can sample next week. And then once those samples come back, we'll go ahead and tap everybody, you know? Um, we ran into a body problems early on. Turns out that our maps were wrong, so again, it's not ran away with the dug was. So this slows down, but now we're kicking it up in the high gear. Yeah, we should have it done by the next week, you know, take off on the wall. Hopefully it'll smooth and start up.
Yeah.
But all will hopefully do it.
At least on Wall Street, you know, you can do it right.
Wall Street, we dug up enough times and enough different places that we lay out the info.
Yeah.
Buck, we dug up, you know, just a few times, so.
Yeah.
When we hit wind, we realized that they must have started digging that flying in at the same time from two different ends. Cause when they got to wind, their lines were offset.
Oh, really?
They turned into a black eye.
We can imagine.
But, but, uh, hopefully that's the end. Kind of ended that stuff, but not that far. But all will hopefully, we get this good. Yeah, we're trying to track this, so we have to have... We had a few leaks, uh, with the home we had, only took care of the smaller leaks, so we got the wall for it. Uh, granted, two weeks ago, we had mains blowout two days ago on the weekend. Luckily they had them instead of during the week when we were trying to lay pipe in for them.
Yeah.
Still stuck behind the weekend.
Oh, yeah.
But all will hopefully pretty soon, like, we got the horse stop, so everything coming to pass stuff, which does, slows down nicely.
Alright, everybody, we'll be able to get all, get back. Good luck with your progress. On Shepherd, yesterday, and the contractor, we need to force him to focus on it. Oh, well. How you doing?
Good.
You ready, Bill?
Alright. The only thing I really have is an update on the saloon in the general store. Uh, the materials are all in contractors that are going to do, he's gonna come in and repair the back wall with general stores and rewire it, and rewire the saloon. And fix it with drywall, the general store. He's gonna start on that on Tuesday. I don't have a finish date yet, but it's being done as a donation. So it's not costing us or anybody anything other than he's doing as a donation. And then once that construction is complete, uh, my wife's gonna move forward with opening the free clothing store in the general store. And we're going to begin the process of starting the after, the after-school activities center, little center. I have, uh, dance teachers lined up to come in and do like dance camps. And they're planning on doing like a two or three week dance camp, many recital on the stage, you know, and things like that. It's something to keep the kids off the streets and...
Keep them warm.
And there's gonna be like the bathing booths, you're gonna come in and tutor them and things like that, so, cause they have to have community service hours to bathe and things like that, so. There's volunteer time to come in and tutor the kids if they need it, or whatever, that's gonna be free, free to the public, you know, so.
Be good for me, it's a deal.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, George.
Here, this is on redevelopment, I've got something here, uh, I was looking at the document, uh, picking up some of the fall of the redevelopment commission design. Um, building property on sixteen North Washington and one eleven West Fifth to the redevelopment commission. And we prepared building property, uh, the environmental base, we want to put properties and completed, uh, title searches have been completed. So the last piece of this puzzle is to do the town council to adopt this resolution, don't make the apartment on sixteen North Washington and one eleven Fifth for redevelopment commission. Uh, Brian, I'm talking, but I still the, uh, accepting the resolution, the redevelopment commission will do. And I, I talk to you on the phone, man, remains, you know, I talk to you.
I received it right before I got here, I haven't had a chance, I'll be honest, I haven't had a chance to read it.
Yeah, but I just wanted to know, uh, the town council goes ahead here and adopts this resolution, I, then I'll stand and give. I made two copies, so if you adopt this tonight, we can sign it, we'll, we'll also keep the vision on, you know, in mind. But since that whole line, redevelopment commission is what I...
Uh, good job. As a, as a side note to this, uh, at our last meeting, Don and Steve and the man decided to... They asked me if I would take over for Paul on an interim basis, so feel free to send me the issue, sir.
Sure, sure.
And, but be prepared, I may, you know, load your phone up, please. Paul will deal with you on a lot of stuff that I was not necessarily in the...
Well, the bigger reason is that, um, we have, we have, so, uh, and you just announced it, because that's, uh, that's all we need, you know, a term across the line, but if you think this is done immediately, you get a transfer to redevelopment commission, you have to...
I fully understand, like I said, just, you know, don't be prepared, I may have to call you again.
So, um, if you want, I can read this, yeah, on page? Okay. So the resolution twenty twenty five, however, listed, keep the office, however, listed, definitely the, the, if you could, uh, resolution, don't make the apartment. Whereas the town sheriff, um, sort of will state that he desires for don't make, don't make you to the charter for the commission, push up to IC two six dash one dash seven. And whereas IC two four six dash one dash one dash eight, authorize the government to transfer four students property on terms and conditions agreed upon by the entity. As evidenced by the adoption, substantially identical resolution by U ten. Now therefore, we have to talk on the sheriff and town council, but the town sheriff don't make the following, start new state to the redevelopment commission. Lot number eleven, assuming the new exhibition to the town sheriff is shown by the blackbird, reportedly, blackbird, one page twenty pervert. Wherever quarters office is, all county parcel number one hundred and eighty percent of the law. Commonly commonly known as one eleven West Fifth, Sheriff and the answer, so they said not. Also, take the fee equal with the north end, lost on to the community recreation to the town sheriff, shown by the blackbird, reported in the blackbird, page twenty pervert, quarters office, all county, again. Excepting the American front, when we talked about west, and there, and leading step track, right, it's about fifty feet north, south, hundred feet east and west. Again, the parcel number commonly known as sixteen North Washington, three, showing Indiana, three, seven, seven, nine. The town council, probably, we can offer to execute any, all these three documents, with the number of the real estate, for your sale on the county, the lot, uh, twenty twenty five. It's, Jerry, it's a deal, deal, bar, you know, some of the poor, now, people, forty eleven, it's a trade method, that, uh, he, he put it all, after he got the gas station, Troy, right next to it, and told it up. That would free up all that for that Chris Aiden, you know, of this business. Okay, um, the only thing with the resolution is either, as, as a resolution member, the resolution, oh, five. Who, who, eight?
That's two eight, seven.
Okay.
Um, we can ask the government for our resolution, does it have, it's a one, maybe we have to have two, three, four, no, I know what you're saying.
Who is, what's the issue? They don't, they don't say in fact, who has the resolution, but warrants is usually, you have a penalty or something like that, maybe something wrong, a resolution is just basically an declaration of something. Uh, you didn't say that it had to be, uh, I'd have to say that the real estate, Don, denied that, uh, to get it, to get it going. So if we don't, if we go to the office, then, um, we, I've got two copies, I've signed the voice, and give, why, it's a common good. He basically, probably, it's open to go back on the list of things that any play.
Right.
But I think the real estate should have a problem. And then, next month, then you have the offer, you have the second resolution, you accept it on the ten, 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 should, see you later. Yeah.
All better.
That's gonna be my guy. So I'm making a sign twice, so.
Yeah, I know. Keep it away.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 that's all I have.
I don't know, did the quote come in also for the reference?
Uh, yeah.
I'm done.
Uh, yeah, that's it.
I guess you, okay, they said they can do, so that was for like the whole area in the square?
So they said if you don't wanna do the whole area, it's just gonna be like under each apparatus? And then, and then somehow, they could do a smart, but I don't know, so that's what we need.
Huh?
Yeah.
It was just, it's a little bit broken, you have to have something else.
I, uh, I reached out to, uh, I reached out to Rogers, there's all, cause he does, he has the playground approved, which is, was a certain, I don't know what, playground approved. And he is supposed to be giving me a quote, and he said he becomes a huge break, but he hasn't got the quote back to me yet.
And that would be concerning, so we should find out.
It's like a town, it was a town, he like set up in a park with some...
Oh, yeah.
Good. But, or the pizza for fundraiser, so they can then start hanging. Was there any fines when the air shows up?
No, 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 fines, that was a big fine, it was, it was a break. So it was a fine, and it was also, one thing, not three hundred bucks, for a small frame. And I tried to deal with them, but, but, what I took from the video, kind of, a lot of stuff, maybe it was eighteen bucks, to their, to their, to their intention, but, leave out that, you know, I did.
I did, I didn't mind from, on, online, or whatever.
I don't think every, every two years, you know.
Down to sixty bucks, traffic.
Yeah.
The T O F, and they also, uh, they said that next month, probably month from now, they'll send us, like, a closing letter, and I have them, and they're like, what can we do as a council? They'll come up with, like, our own training guide, so OSHA's like, okay, but OSHA wants an exterior training as well, so they're getting us in contact with, uh, another company, they're helping, come in, like, single power, and then, they'll, uh, train program, all that, and able to, uh, do our confined space, but what we have here, uh, our training, everything like that, and they have own protocol, type of training, training, all that.
I don't know that, too.
So as long as we get all that implemented and stuff, as I said, eventually they'll come in and check, and actually we got all that done, but until they send us what we actually need to do, and, uh, and we get that submitted to those next companies, which is free of charge, as I said, it's kind of like, they're just handing up there, and, uh, they'll come down and help us. Uh, you, you get them all the training, all protocols, all the, everything, and then we can set up, and they're kind of shoveling with the layers.
Well, we went through our last stuff, when I was at the elevator, there was, somebody got fired, and they made a phone call. There was only one, one person there that was confined spaces, and OSHA certified, and...
Well, they're not, they're, 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 OSHA does, they do their own, then there's no one to have trained for a class, or we hired a person, uh, they come in, they get our training, they, they're, they're clients, but they're not really, they don't really, um, close in conversations, they wouldn't really worry about a bunch of class on themselves, they said that's a good thing, but really, they're like, going to this, this, and this, which really helps us out in a way.
And we're gonna have to do, what, something like that.
We went on time, like, wrap up, and we worked, kind of, on that, a big block.
I'll make more of them, tell you, Dave.
Before you make a motion, I talked about that good, that anything, so that everything incorporated, like, the rest of it, so she said that we need to read in the record, if everything have a record, just so it'll affect face, you know, and give back, and me, and the name, and all of that, you guys. So, um, she just said to read in the record, what is the reasonable name back there?
It was, it was miswritten.
And then anybody checked to make sure it was miswritten on the paper?
Yes.
Jase Draper, and you guys all think it was miswritten on the paper?
Yes.
Okay, so, on our record, I have a Facebook post from September twentieth, twenty twenty four, where it was advertised, it's starting to pay us fifteen dollars. Second on record, I have basically a website post, where it says it's starting to pay fifteen dollars per hour. Third on record, I have the, the post from the newspaper, and it's following the time showing, it's starting to pay us fifteen dollars an hour. All dated prior to start date, all dated from the time you fired me. I also dropped a state board account, because you guys said that you called state board account, you did call state board account, but you left out the fact, the salary agreement states it's fifteen dollars an hour. I have email right here, which I passed down, that said, once they're going to audit, I had it audited in accordance with the salary agreement, so it's a combined council. Next, I contacted Terry, sent him screenshots of Facebook posts, the website, and the newspaper. He said, I agree with S B O A, we should follow the salary agreements. When this employer received his first paycheck, he saw how much he was getting paid, and he just might think he could quit. How can you say that you might audit it perfectly when you receive a paycheck and do what you're speaking? I gave the town, come back, we don't want, we don't want open. Becca said, if you still choose, go ahead with that, and you make sure that in your motion, you use the exact words of, I didn't see advice from my attorney, I didn't see advice to state board accounts, I didn't see advice of the court attorney, I didn't see advice of any attorney, that can equate, I'm making motion to blah, 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 whatever. So she said, keep in mind, Terry also said this, you're setting a precedent, and it's a bad precedent, if you do this, any employee, past, present, or future, that comes, no matter what the salary agreement says, will have, the span will prove that they deserve back to you.
I do have one here on the website, where it was posted for thirty one thousand, I was here recently, and it's one of them.
No, that, that is dated, let's see, nine nineteen twenty twenty four, and they all, they say the exact same thing, because I probably paste it, my email to paper, my business post, and the website. How long? There's the whole thing. Uh, September twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. September twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. And then the website was nine nineteen twenty twenty four.
Did you guys have any of those? I don't think you guys have any for hiring.
Just to help on.
Just to help on, okay.
We go to the person who comes on.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
If the attorney tells you not to do it, and the state board of accounts told you not to do it, why would you do it?
You go in there for the, like, the bar, and you basically, power man, so you couldn't scavenge.
Doesn't count, I asked Terry about it, it says starting to pay fifteen, there is no negotiation, written black and white, starting to pay fifteen, we were to develop. He said at any time, though, had, if you go saw on this case, that it became actionable, and that would go through the conversation, at that point, but we won't go back and take it from you. Like I said, you can, you can do it though, Becca said, do it that way, or do it that way, if all of you guys.
Y'all are opening up the safe door of the suster, if you don't.
Okay, so, so start date, number first, you guys, the, 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 the.
Okay, taking a car. You probably have the numbers all the way.
Oh, I got it.
So much, I've been looking at it a few months, but I, I call, it's, going from that hire.
Is that a solid paper?
No, I, uh, it's, it's, I, I don't really agree. But, recall the data.
You want to go solid, that's, that's.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go.
Uh, remember, two more in the third quarter.
Um, he said, I was at the middle of the store, on the first wrong, and it's been working for a while over here, and despite everything, he's been working really great, totally adequate, fast moving, and a couple seconds, though, that ultimately working, perfect for the store as well, before selling me intense, and still no action either, after one year, I took it upon myself, the purchase in this very first, and ours, and July period, I installed new name, clutch lever, and commercial grade choice, because he guessed right in the evening, this part goes all the time. Uh, while this kind of the grateful, that's not very good, it's a cutting edge, there are two things that make it good, they don't, they don't find seven at the beginning, that said, I was appreciating it, but remember, the cost of the payment, and the urgency, please see attachments for, for before and after coverage, showing that clearly works, since serving my brother, I'm reaching out directly, and hope that can get settled, without any complications, I can't go up. I even, I'm obviously, I think that's, that's, uh, I put a copy of this, it's really hard to see, uh, well, he, I'm not sure, but only highlights those two bottom names, so I don't know if I'm just saying, I think he provided, so he's just those two that he highlighted, uh, so we would have wanted to. Uh, so it's going to count for, I don't know, I don't know what they're doing, it's not pretty bad, is it?
Uh, yeah.
For, uh, right on the ninety two fifty two, you know, there's a lot of the, uh, the, the.
I'll make more, pay it.
And then, Jay, is that, justify your material, is that, is that, you brought up, uh, you, I don't know, that, is it?
Yeah.
Is it pretty much enough, or? Is it pretty much a matter of...
I'll be, uh, as long as we put that in late, uh, I'll probably, uh, make sure that they're more like, I'll try to address it if you guys have some meetings.
I was talking to Alan, when I, to him, for four months, he's not on the court, and so, I said, and he said, uh, he said, we did that out, day two, this law, that, that's the, you know, which is not a contract.
The whole length of the mill.
No.
No, it's a, no, it's a storm. So make sure that nothing's collapsed.
Because also if it has, why dig it up?
Okay, we have to, that's one thing that we're gonna have to fix, okay?
Do I tell them?
Storm drains on the mill mostly from a sand.
Hello, Mike?
When he said, um, I know the one, years ago when we had to give it out with a fire truck, uh, it was actually one of our customer cases. There was only about two inches there at the top that you could actually see through the rest of it. It was saying. And then, well, that was, and then I.
I'm just gonna say, right, it's like. Does the camera see, just like you said, if it's, if that's where they live or not, you correct. He's mainly looking to see if the structure of the M D A, if something's collapsed. If it hasn't, that's just gonna say when he, he did this thing out, but you're not gonna have to.
Is that something?
You wanna make sure that's not.
That's something. I think that's the.
I, I have a thought. I don't know if, if you can do it. I can, yeah, I don't care, as long as we got documentation that those drains intact. Get this cleaned out.
I don't think that much matter on the camera.
Cause you don't wanna be going through there.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not much, oh, but. It's expensive. Yeah. I mean, I mean, at least I said that before we jumped into the next one tonight. So, we can get there.
No, I'm here.
I'm here. It's been a while, I'm, I forget the time around.
Yeah, you want more?
Oh, yeah. Okay, um. And Alex brought a good point here, I thought, back there, he wants to put list of streets, he wants to browse some streets to see what he would like to put, to put in the inventory. And, you know, and just see, see what we can look at, so.
Yeah.
And that can be done, that can be done by, really. It's gotta be, you know, sometimes the ten.
Yeah.
Mill Street, Mill Street, we won't do Mill Street, we're not, this will take time. These other streets won't take much time.
Oh, it's all cut out, I mean, I've got half a ton of other. It's very, it's very, it's very separate between the joint flats and then the market flats.
Good.
Uh, he's good, I mean, the people often wants for a long, and then down there.
Oh.
Just a half ton.
Right, okay, for logo, down payment, dates, cost due. My cost is, print all the numbers for a thousand fifty. That was really kind of like cleaning up, so.
You don't have, you don't have nothing to ask, coming in and asking about it.
Okay.
I'll take your question. I'll say, um, I'll favor.
All right.
All right.
Sorry about that. And we did get a, a sixty recall notice on that far.
Yeah. So again, I think like they're, that's true.
Oh.
The last time I missed them, which I told you, they just said that, that they, that they, uh, started a process before to try to get them, if they pay for it. But I missed it either, but you can't, since then, that's probably, I don't remember.
Yeah, the girl, so she messaged it on the phone, and then, like, I know, she comes around the day.
I think they do what they're at, I have, I have.
Yeah, I have, I just forwarded that email over, that was, yeah, the last week.
Yep.
Uh, especially the news, town members.
Oh, first, uh, you want to go through the salary, or is it maybe they adjust that? Uh, for higher end advertising, along with, and might they have other notes, is, uh, is we're gonna. This new one will start over, seven, ten, thirty, nine, so we need to adjust number two, in my opinion, and then adjust number three. Since they are the hiring mark.
Yeah.
No, it's gotta be fixed, number three.
Yeah, that's your, your new position, your own.
And you have number two, then you do the best, um.
So I have, I have this one in my hand, so if any change you make, we'll just all mark it out, and then we'll return the show file. Cause we'll also have to change the date in the first paragraph, because obviously, that's August eighteen, but.
Now, this is, uh, like, uh. Go right here, so. Uh, I don't remember, cause I think you want to, uh, two right here, with one of the higher, and then that here's number two, of the J's. And we talk, I'll add, so where did we do the rest of the, yeah, where, where did I do the rest of this, um, middle, middle, middle?
It was fifteen.
Fifteen.
Or no, one, like, you didn't have a lot of it, so, that's a whole new position that was added on this one, you can make a position tonight.
I don't know. I said, I think I have a separate. No, but the other one, you don't want to get the reason that's a lot of time on it.
Well, I agree. First, first, I have one, first, I've been there, I'm here.
Yeah, like, most, uh, uh, to.
Make your mention for Oremon twenty twenty five dash, oh, yeah, dash three, I don't know, but you're going to, you have the names of the Oremons. And you're adding waterways, number three, at seventeen hundred an hour. And then, and then the Oremons, it is doing some, or it's explaining one.
So we're just twenty twenty five dash, oh, eight, dash eighteen.
Well, we're, so, that's gonna be twenty, today's twenty, it was eighteen, so it's supposed to be.
Dash twenty eight, dash one?
Yeah, but you're ending it, and adding a waterway, which is number three.
And now, many, add waterway, position number three, at seventeen hundred.
Melissa, you must be dash two, man?
No, that was a resolution.
Okay.
And then, you're also ending it, waterway number two, for what other, for.
And then, okay, waterway number two, from seven to the dollars there, and nineteen hundred three, and hour, giving them two hundred and three seconds. That cover it.
Okay.
You want?
I'll favor, I want you. Well, maybe, uh.
Uh, oh, you, you got it now.
I second it, and I also say, all right.
And then, so, I'm gonna pass, this is the official note, so on the last page, we were signing. On the second page, we're gonna see, like, it's, it's scribbled out, seventeen, but only show it over here. And, um, that will take effect, the paper tomorrow, doesn't sense, so, like, tomorrow's day, from that paper over.
No, we make it.
Yeah, I'm gonna make it.
We're gonna say, long, right?
Do you have a, should I? You press on there. Thank you.
Yeah.
What about, can't move it. Okay.
Oh, I got a little one, I'm gonna jump.
Aaron, and then all of the, so, the, 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 um. Did you guys come up with the, stand out with the lady, or someone thinking of the, or, or?
Oh.
Change.
We got, uh, I think we got seven, seven five, five hundred and three, three top.
Do you think that's effective? Do I want to be able to, I, I didn't really ask you, is that one you want, you hit, or do you think that you can work with this part, and then, and then, you, you, you're hoping, or do you want to try and then, have it open a little more, like, or is that it? Um, have we, uh, presented through our insurance, and make sure that our insurance has covered the end, uh, or is that an after, initial?
Or by, so, you mean, you lost.
Okay, well, I, I knew that the insurance picked up last time or something, and.
Yeah.
I think, I think that will, I think, I think.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, how I get the middle, is, yeah, I don't have a.
Uh, you have anything, you can stick in as well, back in.
We have.
Um, the type of, I think it was, I think you.
Oh, oh, I can fix, you talk about, uh, take, no, we, we don't like, uh. Just, uh, just for five.
So first, one time, the base, before we have, I mean, this, uh, this is bad, I'm checking back, so, it doesn't look, it doesn't look off, or?
I think I have the computer on, I'm, I'm, I'm.
We're giving this team a lot of.
Ah, I'm sorry, okay.
We didn't, you know, we're looking, we're looking, probably, okay.
I don't have a sign, oh, wait, uh, change, or? Wayne? Wayne's in there? Like, Chance, Wayne, Roberts, who? All right. I think the motion to hire Chance, Wayne, Roberts, at seventeen hundred, um, our insurance groupie, and drug test, with a start rate as. You guys want to do one week, if he doesn't have to put two weeks in, and two weeks off, the twelve? Start date, uh, the fifth pending, the drug test insurance, for the twelve, if he hasn't put two weeks in.
I'm not certain the motion. You want?
Chance Roberts.
Yeah, Jason.
So Roberts, two on seven, because that's, that's, we'll be, uh.
So five oh two, uh, I signed a structure fire, and I'm gonna break it down, everything really, I don't know what I'm firing, and then, uh, drug explorers, depending on what, and, 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 uh, uh, gets up, and, uh, uh, you have, come down to, uh, uh, target, the other day, uh, our, our, set tools around five oh one, uh, barriers, with the, uh, and, 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 they're gonna, you know, seems to be starting alright, right now, but I feel more comfortable to start the work, okay, and stop the new barriers, with the, uh, whenever it comes to that stuff, I'd rather have a truck to get on, and make sure that they're gone, than taking a gamble. They did a lot of trying, um, and, 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 so, uh, uh, I don't know how much barriers are, I'd rather, or something, to get it set, and then, the first fire, actually, registered, and then they had to buy batteries to go. So I, I think it's just something, the, is that time to, replacing batteries, or? Yeah, but it makes me kinda nervous for the Indians, uh, to continue to fight around, I mean, it might personally be a bad idea, but I, I don't particularly want to, um, them, now that they're, I think, uh, it's, I don't. Uh, I did check back on, uh, with, and stuff, truck was off, it was in the drain, so. Um, and other than that, I've got, uh, ten thousand dollars in the line, I, um, I'd like to get some new fire equipment, and, uh, I'm like, these things, we're trying to get the votes in, getting, making everything else, trying to, um, is it, uh, how about, okay, has been that, then to be granted first from Melissa, or? Okay, we're, we're gonna, you know, you're gonna pay, uh, uh, you know, you should just go, do what you want, and that ten thousand dollars, where, really, to the town, show.
That can happen, yeah.
Again, then, then, that way, it's super, like, it's, it's, and it needs to be, I have to write your name, or basically, whatever, it's, 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 so. Yeah, and that's worth, but, yeah, you got change in there?
Yeah.
You, you put last year, and then, and then, okay.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying, along.
Yeah, yeah, Melissa, you want to, you put, Jimmy, Jimmy, so.
Either, oh, yeah, or, or just let, I would fly, I, yeah.
Yeah, I'll try to, I can, you know, too, but I don't remember. Um, local, like, the other point, I'm talking about, two, uh, truck, from one of these cameras, uh, a little bit higher, so, quite over, so I'm trying to get, get them once, uh, and, 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 stuff, that, that would find, things like that, and pretty, they're pretty nice to have, and, uh, I need to, you know, and I believe, uh, for, uh. Would that be all I have?
No, he's, uh, from, from, uh, I heard, uh, he's, uh, a great worker, and then, a huge, uh, big worker, for, I got that pool building, uh, he was back, um, of all those three, they had, uh, that little, uh, uh, on, two, four, and, and, had, uh, the whole, like, I mean, I was aware, uh, I think, uh, blank, uh, there, a little bit, uh, still, it's, 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 uh, uh.
Oh, man, look at her, it's, taken, like, a whole, uh, uh.
Oh.
I wonder how to refit it, you know? You got, uh, sit, uh.
I think since she paid somebody, like, to, to, to fix it, instead of waiting on the stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, even if, even if you gotta pay her back, we're done with it now, because she, kind of, hopped over. Venus took post, so they got it to a, to a, to a.
It's, uh, and they're gonna call, and, 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 they should, they have, they're over there, they have, they said, uh.
I mean, two weeks, two, two, two.
I, I, I don't know, but, like, I think, every day, like, it was like, months and months and months, and they kind of got something, and then, uh, two weeks. But, I mean.
You already got it, also, okay, yeah, it's, like, um.
Yeah, I, I'm, I don't think so, I don't think so, but, I think if we do that, everybody's gonna get a hold of you, and they're maybe gonna start calling, instead of, let this stuff settle, and then, then, hey, now, this is gonna be, I'm gonna figure out how to fix it later, because everyone's got murders in New York.
It's all working, so.
And, and, I, I, I guess, they're back, they, they see it, and, 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 whatever, it's calm, so, I think we go outside, and, 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 we, we do that, and, and, it might look real, but, I mean, sometimes, it's what we gotta do, like, if it does, uh, but, you gotta give it time, or it's just gonna.
Yeah, it's horrible, I don't know.
Yeah.
I got one thing before we wrap things up. I'm hoping the ladies at the community club wrap their, consolidate their items, and close them down, um, and two items that would have to be the town involved, and of course, is, are two of their concerns, is the Catholic charities that comes here, and the nutrition center, there's a lady that comes in, goes for the town. If they close out their room, they're concerned about those two programs staying, um, you still have Heather K. Singer, and Suzie Walker, who are willing to continue taking all care of that, and they're getting hold of the lady from the nutrition program, to see if she still wants to go in and out on that, so it's still kinda new, because we just had the meeting today, but there's some other things, um, once they close out, they're paying the bill for the gas and electric, to be for that room. Once that closes out, that phases out, that's why they're concerned, will the town pick that expense up, and allow those two programs to still run, or?
Are they doing this in the building, or what are they doing with, like, are they getting forfeited?
They're leasing it from you guys.
Are they forfeiting the lease, or what are they doing with the lease?
They have it for like a hundred years, so, that's another thing, we need to find out how to close this out, um, they also have items in there that'll be taken out, but they do have a deep freeze, they have a refrigerator that's theirs, and that's something else, but I'm gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do with those. Yes, in this room here, um.
Well, I mean, so, they just won't phase out the program?
They, they're gonna phase out their club.
I don't know, if they need, just give them time to get it out, I don't know, I mean, who knows, and, and, you're, you're documenting with me?
Yeah.
I mean, as long as, like, they go, kind of, I mean, they're back, I get the, the, and stuff.
So they're just, uh, can I assure them that that's what's gonna happen, that the town is just gonna absorb the expenses of the utility?
Yeah, the, 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 they're gonna, they're gonna get rid of that hundred year contract, or whatever, to be.
Probably, if it's, if it's, go back.
It would just go back to you guys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just gonna go back to you.
And then, you have a charity, so, that, I think that's the last round here, I never do something, it's, it's.
I think it's absolutely a last, and the lady, as far as the lady goes, I don't think she operates out here all of the time, her name's Marianne, I think.
I'll say your word, proof of confidence.
I don't think she does all the time, sometimes she does at her house, but they were just wanting to be reassured, that she would still be able to come in and function for that program, because they do serve the community.
Yeah.
They bring the food in on Thursday, and they should be still.
No, no, I have noticed that, like, late night in the morning, there's always someone running in there, and in there, and back and forth, like, on, from about three or five in the morning, it seems like all the time, when I'm, I'm making runs, is that something that you know, or, I don't know if it comes from a lot, or?
In that room?
Yeah, they come from, or they go from there, because I can see through the door, and they're, the firehouse, I, there's people, at, at, like, like, all the time.
Well, they, for sure, is.
You said something, because I thought I was losing my freaking mind.
No, it's, I'm, no, I, I know that, that, like, they, I mean, no, there's never a car, or anything, there's just someone, I didn't, they come right through here, and they go back there, and they just cruise around, and then, back all the way through, or.
It is a piece of, I guarantee you that, it's not any of the ladies from the community club. Okay, um. Well, that was another thing, they wanted to donate those to that building, but they didn't.
Well, so, um, I would like, then, I mean, if it's another lady something, if I'd like to change some fees, then I don't want someone has, I mean, there's someone over here all the time, like, I just have firehouses, and.
This one, this one is a lot.
Yeah, that, yeah, they come, they're, they're, no, like, they come home, and they're like, it seems like.
Definitely.
I don't know, actually, I, I don't know.
I'm not trying to, yeah.
The, like, people, like, I've been here, like, all, all, I, 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 I know.
They, it's, it's like, I have a little, and they actually, whenever I did, I tried, I, it's, it's, someone up in the firehouse, and they, they even walk up here, it's not much to guarantee you, see somebody, they're, they're.
It's not these ladies, I guarantee it, and I don't have the keys, and I haven't been up here, so.
No, 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 I, I, it's not about a vehicle, or something, when, there's never a vehicle around.
I don't know, how in the world they'd be getting in here, but I'd like to get this wrapped up by the end of September, that's what I'm shooting for.
I do, I.
They have, uh, they have some stuff in this closet, stuff, I'm gonna get hold of, as soon as I get it cleaned out, but I'm shooting for the end of this month.
That's what it needs to sound like, a marriage picture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who's coming in?
Yeah.
It's, um, no, it was, they, uh, his mom is, uh, is Pearson, they live over there, all, they used to live right near, um, um, some eight cops, like, one, two, three, down the trailer, so not the, so, hit eight cops, you have, uh, the, the, blue house, and the roof, and then the trailer right there, right under that, and, so, Pearson, he drives that little, yeah, Pearson, drives a little, like, little scooter, what I called it, all the time.
How's he get in there?
He helps, because, because he helps with the middle thing.
He was on, yeah. How's he get in there?
Cause he helps with the middle thing, so some, there's always, usually, usually, there's a lady that come, goes to my camera, or, what her name is, but, here helps with the middle thing, so they pull right up, and they pull a vehicle up, and unload, like, the, 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 and ready to go, or whatever, not, for state all night, or what do that, but, I just wanna do him on that most frequent man, and he appears.
Just that.
I, I have seen, it's a regular, like, a great part in the morning.
Why would they get in the mills, and then, and then, go to the bathroom, or? Oh, I, I didn't know, I didn't know.
So, then, now? What, what does the cops ask, what is doing here?
I, I remember, I remember, I, I know this, there's a bunch of people that keys over there, I was sitting there, like, a part of you.
There's only one person that the lady's having, that's Suzie, and she's the one that does the Catholic charities, they just want reassurance, are you guys all on board with Catholic charities still functioning, and the nutrition center? Perfect, that's what she really cares, and I'll get that stuff cleared out, and I'll let you know, I'm gonna get it done, okay, thank you.
See, there's.